Where are Jeff and Doug? Doug's not feeling very good with his back.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, August 21st, 2017 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order and request roll call, please.
Udro? Carpenter?
Here.
Steaton?
Here.
Bollig?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Brethauer? Grenier?
Here.
Thank you. Item three, public appearances. Item A, discussion of possible action regarding Pamela S. Naylor, 328 Birch Court, Senator sewer backup reimbursement request from 7/10/17. The recommended motion is to approve in the amount of $971.86 to Pamela and Joshua Naylor for reimbursement under the village's sewer backup reimbursement policy for the 7/10/17 sanitary sewer backup, which occurred at 328 Birch Court. Payment should be contingent on Pamela and Joshua Naylor signing a release of all claims.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Question for staff.
Yes.
Jeff, when, what, what, how much money is left in that $5,000 account?
Five thousand? Oh, it's a $30,000.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Okay.
I'm adding in my head.
Roughly, yes.
Seven.
There's no.
Eight. No, like 20, 22,000. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Fine, out of 30. So 30 plus another two plus another one, that's about.
And another one, that's pretty close.
Yeah.
Are either Josh or Pam here? I thought so. Would you like to speak to the board? Okay, so you feel everything's clear enough for us? Okay, thank you. So questions, comments? Okay, spread the motion second to approve reimbursement in the amount of $971.86 to Pamela and Joshua Naylor for the sewer backup at 328 Birch Court. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries.
And I'll just comment, I'll send out that release, I'll send that out to, you can drop that back off, and then as soon as we receive it, we'll send it through as a payment voucher. It'll get approved through this for payment. Alright, thank you.
Item B, discussion with Jerry and Bonnie Thiel on possible action regarding landscape license agreement for 125 North Main Street. The recommended motion is to approve the landscape license agreement for 125 North Main Street. So, if you want to come forward and just explain for us, the public, quickly what you've got in mind, and then we'll work on the motion. Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Bonnie Thiel?
Jerry Thiel.
Yeah, so we went forward, or before the plan commission, with a landscape plan for the area that is on the north side of 125 North Main Street. Fifteen feet of it is an alley, currently an alley for the, that the village owns, and our proposal was to use six feet of it to develop landscaping. And there's a plan, I believe it's attached in, in your packet.
Yes.
And then also, there had to be, obviously, an agreement to, with the village to, to enable that to happen. We got a draft from Matt, responded, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight.
Okay.
This plan also takes care of a safety issue right on the corner. Seeing we have a zero lot line on the northeast corner, it's a very bad blind spot, and by extending the landscape out six feet, it's going to help, so nobody gets hit by a car crossing over it.
Slows things down a little bit. And then with, with the advent of more retail there, you know, of course, there's the antique shop that's been there for about a month now, and he's had a lot of traffic, but with the hope that there's going to be even more pedestrian traffic, it seems like, like a good plan.
Yeah, good. So do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So are there questions or comments from the rest of yous? Any questions for Jerry and Bonnie?
I, first of all, I'd like to say I appreciate what the Thieves are doing to that building. Another building, I should say.
Thank you.
But it sounds like it's going to be a nice looking facility when you're done. It is already. Are there any costs to the village in doing this, other than the, was there a bond or something?
There was, there's no cost, other than there was some expense in drafting the license agreement.
Okay.
But I don't believe there are any other, you know, out-of-pocket expenses.
Alright, that's my only question.
Other questions? Okay, stating now, we have motion second to approve the landscape license agreement for 125 North Main Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thanks.
How it works out.
Okay, item C, discussion of possible action, facade grant request for ACE's main tap. You want me to do this recommended motion?
Please, yeah, please.
So here's a recommended motion from staff. Rather than executing a facade grant agreement for main taps facade request, the board approves $266 the main taps facade grant contingent on the director of public works verifying that the facade work is in compliance with the planning commission and historic preservation commission's recommendations. So, it's a motion I'm bringing forward. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any comments from staff?
We, we just thought, because it's such a small amount, it would cost more to have Matt prepare the agreement than actually the, the grant, so, to make it simple. And then they give me to have to come back, and we don't want to hold them up either, so.
Yeah, okay, okay. Did you want to make any comments about this? If so, you have to come to the microphone. But you don't have to if you don't want to.
No, thank you for the approval on the haunting. Yeah, we were hoping to get that going by September. Furthermore, Kevin's looking at advancements for the back of the building. I know we've talked about that. Does anybody have any sort of thoughts on when that'll be proposed, what you're going to do back there? Because I'd like somebody to come in and do the engineering work now, get a plan drafted, depending on grade.
The, well, the grade will be pretty much the same, other than we can, we can bring the edge of the concrete, or the height of the asphalt at the concrete up to that point. So we can raise that up four inches, and all it will do is help the drainage away from that area.
Okay.
But, so I would think you have pretty much everything you need, you know, to work within the box of what you have back there.
Okay.
And elevation wise, but.
Okay, so I can start working on plans and then get paperwork submitted for that kind of thing, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
So we have that motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're all set. Okay, item four, review of village administration's revised 2018-2023 capital improvement plan for general borrowing only in possible board direction.
Oh, boy.
I know the excitement I can feel.
You have megafine glasses you want to hand off, Mike?
That was, Jerry, that was part of our test review.
That's true.
We, we tried to.
I think this is worse than the eclipse.
That's true. That's probably true, you're right. So, I want to, I do want to thank Lisa for all her help on this. She went through many versions of this with me, and I appreciate all the, all the help on that. I'm not going to read this, I'm just going to summarize it. You know, the board approved the motion back in May. It took a while for me to figure out how to, you know, take about $26 million and try to get it to a more manageable working number, including the library and doing the senior center. As you can see, I, I was able to get it down to around $18 million, which includes the library and the senior center. And how I did that was, I'm just basically saying that, with Lisa's help, we figured out that between 2018 and 2023, there's about $6.8 million of expiring debt, and I just said, well, we're going to try to hold our other expenses to that, excluding the library and the senior center, if we can. So that's the base. The board could always say that's the base, and you can add things to it, but, but at this point, that's what I'm saying should be the base. It went up to $7 million because, at the end, I sort of forgot about the fire district. So I had, had some money back into the, for the fire district, which probably came up to about $7 million. I'm also indicating that we should not go over the $10 million mark, because we, we end up paying a higher interest rate, which is why, in the proposed year for the library, 2020, I'm proposing holding a lot of the other debt or expenses out that year, because trying to keep, because this, at this point, only includes general borrowing, does not include water and sewer, so we cannot go over $10 million if we, if we can try. Because there's so many things you can see on that list that got bumped, we decided to use a six-year period versus a five-year, you know, that way the board can take and put some of the other, other projects in 2023, so we don't, they get included in the plan. There's so many important things that, at this point, are not, are not part of the plan. On page, on slide five, I, I have the listing of things that I think make up the $7 million. I do want to note that the $500,000 in there for J.C. Park West, at this, at this point as a placeholder, we should be getting the estimates from Rettler, our consultant, Jeff, right, this, this week?
Yep, this week, yep.
And then we obviously bring that back to the board, I'll be sharing that with Jimmy Bush and other organizations, so. And so I, I just, I, in, in some cases, I said, well, this is what I think we should buy as far as equipment, but I basically, as you can see on the sheet, I'm just allocating money to a department head to say, this is what you have for equipment over the next couple of years, and then they can decide how to use it. And so, I, I got, give an example on six where, you know, the fireworks department's going to be allocated, would be allocated so much money, and they would, then Jeff would have to decide how to buy his tractors and trucks within that allocated funding for the equipment. At this point, as I mentioned, we have the new library and the new center, new senior center in here, but nothing has been included for remodel or new village hall. That was in that $26 million, and so I, I had, that was like $5 million, which I took out. I mean, we cannot do three, you know, three buildings in the span of five or six years, we just can't afford to do that. So, at this point, unfortunately, the village hall is being left on the, on the sidelines. Lisa and I talked about this quite a few times, about this 40-year loan that Jim Mann talked about, and I think Jim has, right, Lisa has convinced us that, that we think that's the way to go. It's going to help to reduce the tax spike of borrowing for the library, and, and most likely, if you take a 40-year loan out, Jim is saying that most communities, when you hit the 20-year mark, you refinance it anyway, so you end up, you know, dealing with that. But initially, you have a lot lower interest rate if you take a 40-year loan out, it's like a 30-year mortgage out. And Jim will be talking about that at the September 11th board meeting when he shows up. I do want to indicate that isn't just the library that's sort of driving this. On slide nine, on page nine, I list out the major street projects that we'll be doing in the next couple of years. Extension of Perry Parkway, the joint project on Janesville Street with Dane County, the joint project with, with the county on Main Street, on, on Main Street with Dane County, and I'm saying in 2021, the year after the library gets built, the construction traffic is done on there. And at some point, probably somewhere in this time period, I'm saying 2021, we would have to reconstruct Park Street as part of the hotel project. And, so, you know, that's 3.2 million dollars, that's a lot of money to be spending on, on streets, along with everything else, so it isn't just the library that's sort of driving this, this challenge. The one thing I, I feel a little frustrated, and I couldn't figure out where to, where to fund this, is, you know, I know that State Street, Washington Street, and South Main Street need, needs to be done. There's lead, water services in the area, the surfaces in that area are not good, but at this point, I do not have the construction in the, in the revised CIP. I do have the engineering, but I think at some point, as we look at this every year, I think the board will have to, you know, work with us, try to figure out how to, how to pay for those streets and move them into the CIP. Some, on some good news? I got some good news.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. So, so in approximately 2020, 21, the red brick incentive that we are currently being paid, that currently being paid to Gary Gorman will expire, so we'll have like an additional $60,000 of TIF III increment to put, put towards TIF III debt service, which hopefully we can maybe pull some of it out and put that towards general borrowing going forward. And then with the creation of TID V, one of the goals was to try to hopefully, in the, in the future, TID V starts to donate money to TIF III for debt service, which then, again, frees up general borrowing levy for, for other things, so. Then I think the really interesting point that we'll have to discuss with the library board going forward is this, what's called the, you may recall a memo that.
Laura did.
Laura, you know, from Matt's office did, about impact fees. And she recommended that we would use what's called a cost recovery impact fee, and which, you know, she was estimating could generate over a million dollars of impact fees for the new library. As, but as I point, point out in the PowerPoint here, that's assuming that the library doesn't need the entire building. If they do, then we can't, we can't use that recovery method. So that, as we move forward with the new library, we're going to have to talk to the library board about that.
I'm sorry, Mike, would you repeat that last statement?
Sure. So, you can only use the cost recovery method. If, if you build a 35,000 square foot library, and library board says, we need that entire space day one, you cannot use this cost recovery method, because the cost recovery method is for future, is for the future. So if you build a 35,000 square foot library, and they, they say, we only need 20,000 square feet of there right now, my understanding is you can put the 15, you can put the impact fee on the, on the balance that you need for the future.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're using it to pay for excess capacity that we're building to pay for people that are moving in in the future. Excess capacity. You use this cost recovery method. For that. That's the, that's the methodology.
Right. And I think that's going, we have to talk, that, obviously, you need a lot more. Right. I, and I think that's gonna, we have to talk, that obviously will need a lot more discussions with the library board and, and the Matt's office about, you know, if we can do that, when we can do it.
So do you have to leave that vacant then?
That's why I say at the end here, we need further discussion with the village attorney. I, we'd have to, we'd have to research that.
It'll be interesting to find that out.
Yeah, I don't think that's the answer, so, but we'll, we'll work through the analysis.
Okay, all right.
So Jim will be here on September eleventh to, uh, review the, the entire C I P, which includes the, the general bond that we're talking about now. Uh, Lisa sent him this, this spreadsheet and also the utilities. And we'll, and then we'll have the, uh, the levy impact, um, at that meeting as well. So that, uh, whatever is concerned, see what the revised C I P would do to the, to the levy. And I fully acknowledge that. You can see on the sheet, there's a lot of things that got bumped out of the, uh, the C I P that, um, this does not include. But I want to emphasize again that even without doing the library, we are, we're doing four major street projects in the next four or five years. And so even if you pull the library out, the senior center, it still would be hard to do some of these things and not raise taxes because of doing four major street projects. And when you look at those projects, there isn't really one that we should say, well, we can hold off not doing it. Or we should, we have to do Perry Parkway, for example. We gotta keep doing the streets with the county. And if we build a new hotel, we have to fix Park Street. So it's, it's gonna be hard to say, oh, let's hold off on those. But, so I think, but we're still, you know, going ahead, but we're still spending, you know, seven million dollars. That's, you know, that's still a healthy C I P to be honest with you.
It's very healthy, yes.
Yeah. So at some point, um, we will ask the board, and, and this could be possibly even at the, the public hearing for the twenty eighteen budget, we may ask the board to adopt the C I P that night. By that time, we would have met with Jim and I think Lisa will probably, you know, work on this a little bit further. We'll probably present it and ask the board to adopt it, you know, sometime in November or December.
We'll probably analyze this in depth during budget process, right?
Yeah, right, yep.
And then I won't have too many questions on your C I P.
No, you can, nope, go ahead, Jerry, I'm just.
Okay, let's start with the library.
Yep.
Eight million dollars. How big of a library is that?
Thirty, thirty-five thousand, two hundred, something like thirty, thirty-five thousand square feet.
That eight million doesn't necessarily cover all the costs.
Yeah, so I'm, I should back up a little bit. Thank, thank you, man. So I think if, I know that Nikki's shooting from you and she's under, under the weather, that's why she's not here tonight. I think, I think it was nine point six million for that, for the library. And so I was thinking, well, they would fundraise the balance and we would borrow the eight million. And, and again, that's just a placeholder number. So you're right, it's, it's close to ten million dollars, right?
We'll be doing budget in a month, so.
Pardon?
We'll be doing, we'll have the budget hearings in a month, or the, at least the budget meetings.
Yeah, but we won't be making a decision on this, I, I won't, we're gonna borrow for at least a couple of years, yeah. But I, I don't see us borrowing the money until, we, we'll probably take a construction loan out in twenty twenty, we talked to Jim about, and probably actually not do the USDA loan until twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So we got, we got time, Jerry, in that respect.
All right. My other question is probably a lot of them are for Jeff, or, and whoever wants to answer them, but uh, delaying those, you know, South Main, State and Washington, um, how much can we delay those without causing the future costs to spike?
Yeah, yeah. I, I guess I could answer by saying, I think, and this is a little bit unfair to the board, but I wanted just to get a little bit of reaction to this, uh, approach. I think you, I think you're gonna wait to decide that, Jerry, when you see the tax levy impact.
Okay.
You know, I, I think that if you, you hold, you hold everything constant that we have in this general borrowing, it's really easy to ask Jim, will Jim put those three streets in in, in twenty nineteen or whatever? That'd be just decision when to do it. What does that do to the levy? Because you're also realizing that, you know, you gotta, you'd be, you know, spending money for sewer and water for utilities, right? Yeah. So, so maybe that's, maybe that's the way to look at it, is wait till we have the levy analysis done.
He can analyze it both ways, with and without. Um, what's your reaction, Jeff, to that? You know the streets and I, I've looked at them.
Yeah, we, we've talked about this internally and, and no doubt, when, when the revised C I P was being discussed, there was some heartburn, um, just because of, you know, and it's like anything else, if, if you have a large expense at home, you know that you might have to cut back on other things to be able to accommodate that. And I, and that's the way I look at it. And it's, may not always be optimal and perfect. But, you know, um, I look at this as a big picture from the village standpoint. You know, our roads are passable. They're, they're, you know, we'll continue to maintain them and repair them and patch them and stuff like that. But, you know, and, and like Mike said, I think we'll continue to evaluate this on an annual basis of, of kind of what really is a priority. And who knows, if the library gets shifted out a year and we have to re, restructure some stuff, um, I mean, I know it'll become a priority eventually.
Right. I was just wondering how much time you think those have before they, you know, you know, the point I'm trying to make is if you wait too long, then it costs you a lot more.
Well, yes and no. I mean, we're talking about roadway reconstruction. So it really, it's, this is not, there's a difference between roadway maintenance and roadway reconstruction. And, and maintenance, I would completely agree with you, you know, and, and those are things that, for roadway maintenance, if you don't seal coat it, say, in a certain time period, or if you don't, uh, crack fill or something like that, you could get a faster degradation of the roadway. But when we're talking about roadway, complete roadway replacement, um, you could let that go back to almost, I mean, there's some areas that, what we're talking about, Northern Wisconsin, that they're allowing their roads to go back, literally pulverize them and, and just grate them and treat them as like dirt roads. We're not gonna do that, but, um, you know, that doesn't concern me, uh, from the standpoint as much as residents I know that enjoy nice, smooth roadways to be on. So that's, that's more of the concern. Because we want to make sure that people are, know we're doing what we can, um, but everyone's always concerned about the street in front of their house and I don't, I don't blame them.
So in the meantime, you'd patch and, and crack fill?
Patch and we, yes.
Any seal coating?
Well, yeah, I don't know if we, we probably would be, on these streets, we probably wouldn't be doing much at all. Just because you really don't want to go in and seal coat or, uh, there's, it's probably too much. And once it's alligator cracked like that, it's too much just to go in and patch because you're just patching the whole thing. I mean, we could look at a mill and overlay at some time, but that's, um, when it gets that cracked up, it's a little harder to do that as well.
Okay.
And what Jeff and I talked about too was, you know, I asked him, and I certainly knew the answer, but I asked him anyways, could you, could you split the projects up? And it makes sense to do all three at the same time.
Yeah, it would, it would.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at a half, half a million dollars worth of just those three streets.
Right, right.
So, okay. And then this thirty-year loan versus a forty-year loan. Now, is the.
Twenty. It, it would, we'd be taking out a, a twenty-year, um, bond versus forty-year.
Oh, okay. You're talk, okay, I thought you were going the other way.
No, no, I'm, what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking to the library. I jumped back to the library now.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. So we're, we're, we're saying initially, I, I wasn't interested in taking a loan out that long, forty years. And, um, after talking to Jim about this for a few times, um, I, I think that's the way to go. I think it allows us to, I'm, I'm comparing it to a thirty-year mortgage on a house, Jerry. I'm sorry if I confused you when I said that. So you, you lower your interest rate upfront on, on the loan.
I understand how that works.
Yep.
It's just the life expectancy of the building. Is it gonna be forty years?
Well, that's why you refinance it around twenty, because it's, at some point, you're, yeah, exactly, that was the issue we brought up with Jim that, so you have a forty-year loan out, you know that you hit twenty years, you're gonna be replacing the roof or maybe sooner, right, Brian? Sorry. And, you know, so you, you had to have, you know, the ability to borrow money. And so that's why you refine it, you'll be refinancing it probably at twenty years.
Okay, so you're going into this knowing you're gonna be refinancing.
Yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully the rates aren't too bad.
You never know.
It's a roll of the dice.
Right.
Has Jim provided us with them? Because I remember when the, he first came, uh, he gave us, uh, estimates of thirty-year loan versus forty-year loan, rates and interest that we'd be paying on both. Can he give us modeling?
Sure.
On refinancing after twenty years?
Yep.
And how that would.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he did last time. He was the, the difference. And then we ran the, right, the, uh, the levy comparison on that, twenty-year versus a forty-year loan.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking, um, to include, and then I realized it would be estimates because we don't know what the rates are and things, but that, when you refinance it to twenty years, what would we, like, reasonably speaking, how long would we refinance before? Estimate of the interest rate, so I can get the total, um, idea of.
That may be hard to do, I mean.
Oh, yeah, but.
I mean, he could, he could tell you what, what he would refinance, but trying to predict interest rates in twenty years.
Right. No, I, I get it.
Yeah.
There's, there's some massaging that can be done in the forecasting of that.
We can ask him, ask him to.
Pretty much.
He may find it interesting to do, we'll see.
Yeah.
And see if he has any ideas regarding additional revenue streams that he may have encountered in other municipalities.
We can ask him, but, but his, his really thing was, was lowering the upfront cost.
Yep.
He, uh, he hears are concerned about the, uh, the impact on the levy, not, not just the, not just the impact, but the increase of the levy, um, for, for buying for the library at twenty years versus forty years.
But he deals with a lot of municipalities. So if he has.
Yep.
You know, I don't expect him to know of any, but in the event that he does, it'd be nice to know.
Sure.
So, this, Jeff, this new leaf collector. Is that, do, the old one's fried?
We're back on this. The, well, it, it, uh, it still is operational, but it's a very manually, um, manually intense and time-intensive process.
Okay.
And the, uh, one of the most, some of the most complaints we get, most volume of complaints we get, at least when we're mowing.
I was, he hasn't said. I was gonna say.
I thought you stopped it.
I did, I, yes, but.
If it wasn't for mowing and it wasn't for a snow, snow, uh, big snowstorm, I would say this is the number one new complaint we get now. And the, in, in the whole year is leaf collection.
Yeah, speed and efficiency.
Because it's not fast enough.
Yep.
Yeah.
Number one complaint.
No, I'm just.
And we fall behind. And if we get an early snow or even sometimes if, like last year, the leaves came down late. And then, uh, even catching up, we end up with maybe a quarter of the village with the leaf pile still on the ground.
And you think.
People get upset with that.
Think about the next seven, eight, nine years, will, Bergamot will be going, or Furducho will be going into the wooded lots. And then, and then Ludopolis, it's ready, two more heavily wooded, uh, subdivisions.
No, I'm not questioning whether you need it or not. It's just a big number, that's all.
It is a big number, yes.
Yeah.
But it, it's truly become the number one complaint we're getting.
Okay.
Yep.
Good to know.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Other questions?
Um, I did have a question. So I'm looking at the items that are moved, reduced, deleted, and they're pretty specific. Couple of things that pointed out, that, uh, stood out to me were like tactical rifle teaser replacement. And then I was looking to see where they were put in future years, uh, because I would, I would imagine those are things that are going to be needed to replace. You know, can't let that slide for too long. Um, is that just lumped in with the equipment?
Yep.
Police department?
I'm saying to Brian, Brian, you're getting this much allocated for equipment.
Yep.
From this, from this list or from a new list, you, every budget, you come forward and you ask the board for, for the funding.
Okay.
As I said, I, I was, I was driving myself nuts. I was trying to figure out, you know, what to give each department head. And I thought, well, I can't figure that out.
Right.
Four years up and some, I thought an allocation of funding would be just easier to do at this point.
Sure, sure. Um, okay.
And, and I, I can tell you right now, the department heads are not happy with this. It's not enough money. But again, I'm saying the seven million dollars is the base.
Sure.
You know, the board can add to it with, you know, talking to department heads, you know, every year, we're gonna be sitting here going through this and, but at least this is a, a base to work off of.
Right.
Yep.
No, I'm just thinking of, um, I would imagine that, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, department heads, but there's probably never enough money to get all the things you want. But, um, I'm thinking more of like, from, you know, my neighbors' perspectives, especially, we just had an issue with the mowing that I see on here. We're delaying another mower. And I'm wondering, you know, are they, you know, as, as a, a resident, am I gonna see that and say, am I equipping the department heads so that they can provide the services that I want as a resident? And that, like, from their perspective, is that gonna be the questions that they're, you know, getting from this?
That's a great question.
And, um, are they gonna be, I mean, I, I'm not talking about the financial component, although that's extremely important.
Right.
I'm just saying, like, are they gonna see this and go, I don't know that we're equipping our village like we need to.
So.
So that's my.
So there's a choice.
Right.
Is, is you give more money for equipment or for other things and you raise taxes.
Right.
Or, or you go on to the top here and you remove something significant out of there. And, and that's, that's my issue is, except maybe for J C Park West, maybe, you know, Jeff and I are talking about where we're gonna most likely ask the board to, to build the two parking lots, or parking lots along Oak Street for, for the project. Maybe you only build one initially, one parking lot, and you take some of that money and put it into the equipment. But a lot of, otherwise, a lot of the, the money, except for the library and the senior center, is, you know, for the streets. You know, we're gonna, we have to do those four streets.
Right.
And so it's gonna be hard to find additional money unless we, we pull something pretty significant probably out of here. And I, and again, you know, I mean, I know there's a lot of discussion has to happen with the library and the senior center. And that three point five million dollars for the senior center, I mentioned this to Rachel, I mean, I, I developed that number using some, uh, information I had from the architect. We were doing the space new study, you know, and, and that, just so you know, that's going, that goes back to this Mike Slavney idea, Vandewall's idea, where we build a library, see, we've been talking about this, the library on the church property. We, we sell the senior center and the library building and property to a developer. And as part of the condition, they build us the shell of a senior center. So this would only be, this would be for the soft cost for the center. And so three point five, is that enough? I, 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 I'm, it's a estimate at this point.
Other questions?
I would just make a comment that I like the approach that you're taking, Mike, by giving the department heads a lump sum and letting them decide. Instead of having us micromanage, I think these guys and women know what they need and, um, and to Jenna's point, we can only, we can only increase taxes so much before people mutiny. So the, the goal is to not have people mutiny, right?
Exactly.
But to have this level of services that we want and or need. So that's, that's like the magic number that we're looking for.
Yeah. And, and again, you know, I was hoping that Jim was gonna be here tonight and you'd be able to see the levy, because the levy impact is what you really need to be looking at. And we'll have that for you in September. But that's really what, besides looking at the needs, it's what's gonna drive, what is the board, and future board's gonna be comfortable with taxes, raising taxes, you know, what is the tax level that's acceptable?
And I do think, uh, the streets, uh, a lot of our streets need repairment. And, and so you're keeping in a lot of those. I think that's really important, you know.
Now, I will say the one thing that, um, and Lisa and I talk about this all the time, we're, we're, we're with Jim on this, it's best to be conservative on the increase in the assessed value. But, you know, we, we're gonna show the board that, um, for the e, twenty eighteen budget, I think our net new construction went up a hundred and, it went, actually, it went up more than for twenty seventeen, so that's good. And we're probably gonna have a, maybe a year of tw, for the twenty nineteen budget, maybe, um, a lighter year. But if, if development keeps happening, we could have some, in some years, we have some really good growth, which will help the budget. But you can't rely on that because you could have a recession and all your, you know, projections go out the window, you know.
Yeah, and there are potentially quite a few single-family, multifamily and two-family units or lots coming, possibly coming in.
Absolutely, yep.
Which can add to our.
Right. And there's a delay. It's a good two-year delay in how it, you know, hits, but it's, it's important. It's part of the, of the, uh, formula.
So the top part of this, uh, under equipment, you have twenty thousand for police and public works and five thousand for village hall, seniors and our library and buildings. How do those amounts compare to what we've done in the past? I don't recall off the top of my head from last October. And maybe you and Lisa don't either, I don't know.
Well.
I'm curious.
Well, it's hard, for, for, for police, it's hard to compare recent history because we bought the body cameras.
Yeah.
We did spillman. I mean, so it's been, we've spent some significant money the last couple of years. I'd say it's probably a little bit light on just a general equipment, but you see that I kept the squad rotation in here. So I'd say it's light. I think public works is probably a little, a little light. I, I held the library to five thousand. I thought, well, they're, they're getting a brand-new building.
Yeah.
And so they're hopefully not gonna be spending, you know, that should be part of the project, the soft cost, right? And, and for the village hall and just buildings, you know, uh, you know, we had last summer. And, and for the village hall and just buildings, you know, you know, we had, last summer, we had a horrible summer here where we, I think, Jeff, how many air conditioning units did we place, probably?
Last year?
Yeah.
Five?
Five, I mean, it was a bad summer.
Yeah.
You know, so it's hard to say, but I would say overall, this is probably a little bit lighter than in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the one that always takes a hit is village hall. We put that off for many years since I've been around, so.
Yeah.
Used to be done.
Well, I, I think, I think when we're talking about the library and the seniors and all that, we're going to have to, we're going to have to have a general discussion about what we're doing with the village hall.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all going to have to come into play the next couple of years.
Yeah, that needs to.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so this is a draft coming to us, Jim Mann will be here in.
September, September eleventh.
September eleventh, and that'll bring some more clarification and more discussion during the budget process.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your work, and I know that was not an easy thing to do.
Thank you.
Let's run item five. Discussion possible, actually regarding number seventeen dash thirty-one, a resolution conditionally designating the former Methodist Church property as a site for a new library. There's a note that the adopted resolution number seventeen dash twenty from the May fifteenth board meeting is in the packet for reference.
Some move.
Second.
So this resolution sets up some conditions going to start in the process, a key one is a group to work on a memorandum of understanding. The library board has a lot of power in the state of Wisconsin, and a lot of decision-making. And we have met with them jointly about a month ago, and the discussion was that we, we need to work in a consensus-building process to, to work together going forward, and I think that's a thing of mine that we all have. And, and this, this resolution, I think, kind of makes that pretty clear that that's the process that will be used.
So when Matt and I were working on this, you know, we envisioned that, you know, you and Jeannie are, will meet with Carrie, Carrie and Brian, we'll have these ad hoc meetings, and then you'll probably have to go back to your respective boards to get direction and meet back again. And I think at the end of the process, we're going to have a really good MOU that outlines what, what we're going to be doing going forward, so. I'm, I'm pretty confident about that.
Yeah. So any discussion or questions, we have, for people that are, are in the audience and watching, we've talked about this a lot over the last year and a half, so.
One thing this resolution does, which is something I know the board has kind of been looking forward to, is makes kind of a statement by the board that the, is in fact may be designated for a new library, subject only to a need to have this working. So, I think that's a, that's kind of the big, the big news in my mind is, this is kind of a formal designation by the village board of the former Methodist Church property as the site for the new library.
Yeah, and sets conditions for going forward.
Yes.
And because of that, Matt and I believe that, that deadline of November of this year to spend the impact fees, it doesn't expire, but we don't, we don't have to, we don't have to spend that money because now we've made this commitment to have the library go at the church property. So even though we don't have the MOU done and voted on by both boards, if we go into twenty eighteen, we're not going to be under the pressure to either spend that money or refund it, because the library board probably shouldn't transfer those impact fees until we have the MOU done.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, that's good news. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I think it's a good place for the library too, but I, I really worried about, about the kids running across the street. And I, I hope we do a, a, a safety thing about that, because really, I'm going to refer back, back to the Oregon Observer where Hans told about it, and he was very correct. I'm really worried about the, the kids crossing the road there, but I would vote for the library to be there, I think it's a good place. But is, is there any way that we can figure out any way that children can go across that street?
In, in TID five, Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's a project to deal with the intersection of Grove and Main Street. So we'll probably have at least a pedestrian crossing, a traffic signal at that intersection.
Yeah, that's, that's such a heavy street though, I mean, at, at four thirty, oh my gosh, they're, they're all backed up, way past that school.
But I think the, so we bought the property, and I don't mean to speak for the, for Rachel, the senior center, but I certainly got the message, message that the seniors do not want to go there, they like being in this area down here.
I understand.
Yeah, and so, and, you know, other building we could do is put up a village hall up there, and, you know, I don't know if that's something that we even talk about, so. There is no perfect situation.
No.
We tried to acquire property right across the street from here, that didn't go through. So our initial thought was to try to keep everything within these two blocks, it just didn't come together, and so.
It's hard.
Yep. No, no, I agree.
Children, I, you know, I don't want to see any child hurt.
Yep, understand.
Yeah, that's a good point, Darlene, we will be diligent in having a highly visible productive crosswalk there, and that can happen. And the other thing is, we have, we have laws in the state to yield to pedestrians, most people don't.
I know it.
But there may be some increased enforcement at that time to make people more aware of that, not trying to throw you both into the rope here, but. Now, I've said this before many times, my daughter lives in Maine, they have the same law, people stop. You can be walking six feet from a crosswalk and nine out of ten cars will stop to let you go through. Here you can be off the curb and they'll keep going right through for the most part, so. It's just a difference in the safety that people use when they drive in those two states, so. We may have to just place the focus on that so that, that people are more aware, you do stop in crosswalks, because they'll be flashing lights and be very.
And I think it's, you know, I agree with it, it is a good place to put it, but I'm just concerned about the children.
Sure, absolutely.
We all are going to deal with that, and like, it's a beautiful sight.
Um, well, I'm just, as I'm, you know, because I, I appreciate Darlene's comments, because having small children and envisioning them walking across the street to the library after school makes me a little nervous, to say the least. I'm wondering, as we're talking about the cost of the library, are we factoring in some of these costs, like having increased police presence, including, I know the, the beacon in Crosswalk is part of TID five, but anything else that we might need to do? You know, we've talked, I've heard us say, not doing a traffic study until after we have agreed to put the library there. Then are we going to take, you know, factor in some of that eight million dollars for the library to then do whatever infrastructure changes we need to, to make it safe for the kids to cross? Like, how is that going to impact the, the dollars that we're budgeting? Because I, when I hear us talk about spending money on the library, it's the shell of the library, it's, it's just on the library, it's not some of these ancillary costs that we are just discussing.
Yeah, that's a good question, those decisions will be coming to us to decide how we want to parcel that out, so.
But yeah, but probably by the time the, the library is ready to go, we will not have enough increment in TID five to pay for those improvements at the intersection, most likely, right, most likely. So, yeah, that, that's a good question.
Yeah.
We'll have to figure out how to, how does that play into the overall cost of the library, right?
Well, and I guess, so from my perspective, it sounds like we're talking about moving forward with the library and then fixing the, the worries of the children crossing the busy street after that's done, and that makes, yeah, I would like to, I mean, I might be misunderstanding, but I guess I'd like to hear more about what we're going to proactively do to resolve that before we decide to put the library there, because that is the one factor that makes me very nervous about putting the library at the Old Methodist Church, is having kids cross.
Yeah, and I think if we, we choose to put the library there, then we choose to make it safe.
Yeah.
And it's just a matter of figuring out the financing for it.
It's always been discussed, you know, at any type, even when Sanctuary was talking about going up there, the, the concern was traffic and turning movements and Main Street and effect on Johnson Street and everything like that. And we feel the exact same way with the libraries, you know, I think when you, when that design process begins, they're going to be looking at trip counts, there will be a traffic study that, that'll need to be done just to make sure, and, and as well as evaluating how many pedestrian trip movements we expect, and then looking at site distances up there and whether or not, you know, a simple flashing beacon will be, you know, called for or something more, you know, there, there are other things that can be done to make it, you know, almost like a pedestrian single, signal, you know, where, where something like that happens. So there, there are options, but I, I know what you're saying, but I think it kind of goes in parcel with the design of the library, so that you're looking at it from not only, like you said, not just the shell, but from the site and the surrounding area.
Now, does the library plan to, will that drive go in through to Johnson too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think when Jen was also saying that, okay, will that cost of?
All of that, I think all included in the eight, eight to ten million dollars is site development costs and, and engineering and.
So they'll, so then in the construction of the library, they'll be the ones that'll be responsible for mitigating traffic safety issues?
The, the MOU.
I, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I just take that out a little farther, because I think of, you know, we had the issue down in Janesville Street, we got the flashing beacon, and it's saving us significant time to get that put up. And I, I understand why I'm not faulting you by any means, but now, but I'm thinking, you know, we're adding one more thing to his plate because of the construction of the library, and i- is it going to all happen? Like, how's that timing going to work? I guess that's.
So you're probably getting a little bit ahead of the process, you, those are great questions, that's, we, we begin with the MOU. The MOU, if you go back and look at the resolution, it, it deals with who's handling the, the whole process, Jenna. Who's going to go out to bid, who's going to oversee it, and, and there's no doubt that Jeff's going to be involved in it. I mean, and we may end up having to hire a consultant, and so your initial question is, what's going to be, what's the to- this is one of the, the issues and problems that a lot of communities have done, is they, they borrow money for a project and they don't think of everything that has to be done on it. And so your very first question was a great question, is, so of the money we borrow for the library project, what's going to be included in that? Is that exact, for example, going to include the hiring a construction manager, for example? So to me, those are all the things we have to sort of work out, probably in the MOU, and maybe, maybe if we end up forming a building committee, there'll be some of the things we talk about as well, some of the details.
Can I just respond to that briefly?
Yeah, please.
So it, it actually, the resolution speaks to this issue and says that this memorandum of understanding must address the process that will be used to design, finance, and construct a new building on the property, including the role that will be played by the library board, the village board, and the library and village support staff in that process. So I think the expectation is, is that first that smaller working group will develop a, a draft game plan that covers that issue that will then have to be approved by the village board and the library board. So you will have the opportunity, first, to weigh in on what process is going to be used to design and build this facility. And so, for example, the village board will be able to decide whether it wants to be, you know, involved in deciding exact, the kinds of questions that you're asking now, how those will be addressed at the design phase, and how, both, both from a design standpoint and from a financial standpoint. So those questions have not been answered yet. The next step is to, to work out a kind of a game plan, a process, how will this process be managed and who will be managing it? That will come back to the board, and, and the board will, will have to decide whether, whether you believe that process is the process you want.
I mean, I mean typically, I was talking to Matt about this last week, typically, when I've done this and you build a new police station, public works building, it's the department head's responsibility to build the building. I mean, it's, that's part of their job, it's their department, they, they oversee the project. It doesn't mean that the public works director or zoning administrator or building inspector doesn't help on the project, but a lot of times it's the department head that oversees that.
So then where, where is she?
She has the flu.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, we just had that.
And, and I'm not saying that that's what we're going to do here, but, but that's very typical, where you're building a library, you're building, building a park and rec office building, the director of parks and rec oversees the construction with the help of various staff.
I, I forgot one other piece of this, so, one, I mean, in, in, one, one part of this is the village developing this facility, right? But the village and, and deciding how to do that. But the village will also be playing the role that it always plays when someone wants to build a major facility downtown. The zoning and site plan and public safety kind of review processes that would apply to any project are going to apply to this project. And so there will need to be, for example, a site plan approved that will address, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but I mean, traffic safety is going to be part of that, pedestrian safety is going to be part of that.
Stormwater?
It, it, yeah, all of the issues that the village would address if it was a private developer building a facility where of this magnitude at this location, the village would be really involved from a, a zoning and planning and public safety standpoint. That's still going to happen here, but in addition to that, it's the village that's actually going to be in control of the whole design process. And we've just got to figure out, well, how is that going to work? What role are you all going to play as the village board, what role does the library board can play? What, what, how are staff going to fit into that process?
Other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion second to approve resolution number seventeen dash thirty-one, conditionally designating the former Methodist Church property as a site for a new library. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So that's on record now. Item six, approval of minutes, we have minutes from July ten, two thousand seventeen, July seventeen and twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, July twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, the joint meeting of towns, and July thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, the special board meeting. Motion, please.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item seven is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of seven hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-one cents for approval.
Some move. Some move.
Second.
Thank you, questions?
Uh, yes. Thanks for bringing the vouchers down, Lisa. Item twenty-six forty to Urforth Body Shop. We had a squad repair, was that body damage?
It was damage on the passenger side door, passenger driver's side door. That was caused by a manhole that came up during flooding.
Was an insurance claim filed on that? Okay, that's be, really my question. And then the, the Ford flatbed, one sixteen nine eighty-five, is that at bid?
Actually, actually it was below what we had estimated. Yeah, we got, we got a really nice, uh, numbers back on that.
Good.
And that, this topic will come up in just a few more minutes here on another, so keep that in.
I'll, I'll mark it, I'll mark it.
Put that in long-term.
Well, yeah, long-term, yeah, if it's a minute, yeah. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we have vouchers tonight with a motion second in the amount of seven hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Roll call, please.
Jacobson? Yes. Staton?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries, item eight is community input, so anyone who would like to address the board tonight, pray. We'll get to all of you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ray Vogler, I live at two ninety-nine North Main Street, and I'm here tonight to thank the board. And I did send an email that had a statement, I wanted to just read that so that all of you hear it. And the statement that I'm reading is on my behalf, but also a number of neighbors are out of town. Some of them went actually down south to see the eclipse today, so people wanted me to read this statement, and so I'm going to go ahead and do that. So on behalf of myself and neighbors who could not be here tonight, I'd like to thank the village board, Mike Grace, Jeff Rao, the library board, and the plan commission for the collaborative process as they handle the old Methodist Church property. Our neighborhood and other citizens of Oregon have felt very included in that process, and we feel it has been open and democratic. So we wanted to underline that, because often I know that you're out there doing the hard work and people don't always give you the positive reinforcement for what you're doing. I know you have a lot of meetings, you have committee meetings and so on, and we really appreciate that you were inclusive and you involved us in the process. And as Steve had said, this has been going on for like a year and a half, so we're very appreciative. Now, our North Main Street neighborhood, as you already know, we support the library on the former church property. the library on the former church property, and I just wanted to add a little point that's not in the statement, but a number of us have kids that have lived on Main Street or on Grove or on Johnson, and a number of our children have had to cross the street. So I appreciate that there's a concern there, but I think it's something we can work around because we had crossing guards, and my son started crossing the street and taking his bike across from basically, you know, kindergarten on because he walked to school. So there's something that we can make that happen in a safe manner. So, what we'd like to do is to help with this endeavor going forward. And our neighborhood has already formed a committee, and this committee would like to assist with the library fundraising. I know money is a big issue always. We wanna be there to not just talk about what we want, but to help make it happen. So we would like to reach out to other groups, we wanna reach out to neighbors, citizens, and involve them in this process, of course, under the auspices of the library board and the village board. And then we also would like to provide sweat equity. So what I mean is, we'll be out there, and we're gonna try to help bring in nurseries, people in the area who can provide shrubs, trees, plants, whatever the village and the library board agree on. And then we'll get out there and we'll help plant that, just as the Rotary has done in many of the parks. So we're gonna be there to make this happen. And then another thing I wanted to bring up is that we were hoping that we could be a citizen building committee working with the village board, working with the library board, have some of our citizens in the neighborhood, maybe in the community, join some kind of advisory committee. We can talk as people who know that neighborhood and be stewards for that land. We know what it's like to live there, we know what it's like to cross the street, we know what it's like to really love those trees and the green space, and I think that we can provide some help with that. So, at closing, I want to say that we know all of this is gonna take a lot of time, probably years, and we see this as a long-term commitment. So we're here now, but we'll be here for the next several years to help along the way, and again, to do the fundraising and participate in the process. So thank you so much for letting me speak tonight and for welcoming our neighborhood into the process the last year and a half.
Thank you for your comments. And as far as the input you talked about, we need to keep in mind, this is a village and community-wide project, so it will involve more than just the neighborhood in the planning, but certainly, I would think Nikki will work on a way to make that happen also because we know you're highly invested in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there were some other hands there? Yes, come on up. Welcome.
I'm Cindy Helmer. I live at one fifty-one West Grove Street. First, I wanna thank you for agreeing to put the library at this property. Second, as I stated, I live on the West Grove Street, and as of Thursday, I've been there thirty-three years. My kids have all had to go across Main Street along with all the other neighborhood kids, and we have taught them at a very early age, if there isn't an adult there, that they have to be careful crossing the street. And I know one of the neighbor's little girls, she's I think going to be five, I believe it is now, she will tell you how to get across Main Street safely. But again, I just wanna thank you all, and it's been enjoyable working, visiting and listening to all the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I appreciate your comment about parent responsibility because that is a big factor in how kids conduct themselves. That will help with the safety. Thank you. Anyone else? Hans? Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Please excuse my appearance and aroma, but I didn't have a chance to freshen up and do my hair and makeup. I was working outside today. My wife and I live at one thirty-three West Lincoln Street. She cannot be here tonight, she's out of town, but I'm speaking partly on her behalf to express some of her concerns. Trustee Grenier, I appreciate that you read the article in The Observer, perhaps some of the rest of you have. That was inspired in large part by my wife. She has done in-home daycare at her place on Lincoln Street since nineteen ninety-one, and I think she probably has as much experience in walking in this town as perhaps any of you with small children, with the most vulnerable users. I was gonna speak somewhat about the safety, but it does seem like, I think you folks have really, are really serious about that. And if you can honestly say, we're gonna do something there, so I'd be okay with my kid crossing there, my grandchild, I'll take your word for it. I think, Jenna, you're bringing up the point about how's this sink? I think it's really important to keep the eye on the ball there and not drop that one. You made a decision, and I'm coming in quite late in the process, so I apologize for that, but what I'm gonna say next doesn't apply just to the old church property. It applies to more of the things the village is doing, looking at growth, looking at downtown revitalization and the like. So bear with me, and I'm gonna kind of step in a contentious issue here, but I think it's, maybe that's my role in life, is to be the...
Let's not talk like that, please, and keep in mind, we go about three minutes per person.
All right. You have made a decision to not recoup any money on the Churchill property, to recoup, get any tax revenues from that. It looks like you're going down that road. This is a fairly big parcel near the downtown. There have been some serious proposals on the table that would have significantly increased your tax revenue base at a time when the village is clearly struggling to keep up with maintenance, given its revenue stream. So we can talk about revitalization of the downtown and new businesses and walkability and stuff, and it all sounds great, but the bottom line is, it all requires more people, more of us being within walking distance of stuff. And the only way that happens is with density, and there are some red flags go up. It can sound good in principle, but when it's proposed next door to me, on my street, eh, no thanks. So that's the reaction of a lot of people, you know, maybe, maybe we like the idea of density and, you know, a more walkable community. But when it push comes down to shove, next door to me, no thanks, especially if it's a fifty-foot wall or something. If someone came along and wanted to build something with fifty-foot walls next to my yard, I could forget my orchard.
You've got about a minute.
I probably can't wrap it up in that time, but I think it's a mistake to not confront that one square on, so that people living around areas of proposed density see a personal advantage, an advantage directly for them. Because right now, say the sanctuary went through, it wouldn't benefit any of the neighbors living around them. They would have, it would interfere with their site, it would have been built in, have been more people there, and no money in their pockets. But if it doesn't happen somewhere, if it doesn't happen actually where you have it downtown, if it happens out in a cornfield somewhere, you don't get out of this trap of everybody feeling like they have to drive everywhere, and then nobody wants to live where everybody's driving, which is really one of the issues on Main Street. You got ten thousand people going through there, probably not one a day stops to think, would I want my child playing on the front yard here? And if I wouldn't, is it because I and a bunch of other people are driving by here ten thousand times a day? It's not a pleasant, it's not a fun thing to think about. It's not fun to look in the rearview mirror and say, this is what I'm doing to the world around me, but it's what's happening. And I would encourage the board to not be afraid to look at that, and yet push the envelope, because we're not gonna break our dependence on a car if we don't confront that one head-on. No, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? I would say that we did try to deal with that somewhat by adding that sixty-one unit apartment building downtown for downtown density. So we'll go on to item nine, proclamations and announcements. Any board comments? Quiet group tonight. Item B, staff comments?
Just the, first item is the population estimate from the DOA, Hartman administration for two thousand seventeen. So, went up a little bit, not surprising. And then I have the budget meetings listed under number two. And then, under the upcoming meetings, I just wanted to note that we're gonna cancel the August twenty-eighth committee meetings. That's why there's a couple of things on tonight's agenda that normally would be on the committee agenda, or committee meetings. And then there's the rest of the meetings for September.
Okay, thank you. So plenty of time to get those on our calendar. We probably all have the budget meetings on anyhow, so that's been before us a long time. Anything else from staff? Okay. We'll go to item ten, village attorney, village administrative report. Item A, discussion possible action regarding fiduciary for D-phase agreement. Recommended motion is to approve development agreement for fiduciaries phase four D. So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Do the board members know where this is, on the map that's attached?
Exhibit A.
Yeah, it's basically somewhat along Perry Parkway and Lincoln Road. Okay. And then the, this is their next phase, and they want to get going on this because they're hoping to get the preto homes in this area next year, which is good for the village.
Are there questions or comments? Okay, it's for motion second to approve the development agreement for fiduciaries phase four D. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Very quiet.
Okay, item B, discussion village staff extend the banking request for proposals, deadline due September twelfth due to issues that need to be resolved at local banks, including requiring unqualified financial audits. This matter will be on the September eleventh board meeting for further discussion with the boards.
You said it.
So, item eleven, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, police chief report. Under that, we have the summary of major crimes for July, updated canine in schools, submitting claim for roof repair on police building, letter from Department of Corrections on municipal lockups, approved for temporary detention, and other items. So, chief, you're on.
Summary of major crimes in July. As usual, I won't go through each and every one of those, but any questions or comments on those that are reported? Nope?
I just said it reported, I think it's very worthwhile for us in the public to see, so appreciate that.
Yeah, it certainly does let you know and give you some idea of what continues to happen in our community, so...
Yeah, you're not just setting up radar.
Right. Update of canine in the schools. You may or may not know, the school board has decided to extend our probationary period or trial period, everyone would call it, for a year. I had hoped, obviously, that they would pass the policy amendment to allow for random searches. They did not do that. There are certain board members that are concerned about a number of issues, and I think that the school board president wanted to try to push that through to get it eliminated, quite frankly. But in the end, they decided to continue one more year to gather more data. What data they're hoping to get in another year, I'm not sure, but we'll have to cross that bridge in another year. As you can see, there's a picture of our roof. Mike so kindly pointed out that it didn't last twenty years. As you can see, there's cracks going through pretty much all the shingles. We already have leaks in the roof. So we submitted a claim, hopefully to get some of that cost reduced. I'm guessing, based on the number of years, it's a forty-year shingle. We've already used sixteen, so by my guess, we'd be lucky to get sixty percent of that based on depreciation. We did receive one quote on that already, and that was for one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Yeah. So that's gonna be a challenge, but that's where we're at. The letter from the Department of Corrections, that's just on the municipal lockup. They go through annually to make sure that we are following their inspection protocols, that we're maintaining the proper records, and we have done that. And other items that are listed on here, I just wanted to make mention of the child enticement. I know there was a couple of you that had some questions on that. I can tell you, it may or may not seem like the police department is doing something about that. We always take those very seriously. The problem we have is, we need to find that fine line between getting the information out quick enough and verifying the information, so we do not panic the public any unnecessarily to do that. You'll recall an incident last year where someone reported this, and the school board put a blast out, and it turned out to be false. And people were panicked because of that. So we wanna make sure that we don't do that. We wanna make sure that we do our due diligence, so we can make sure that there are things that are occurring in our community that we need to put people, make people aware of. We also wanna make sure that we don't hamper our investigations, depending on the information that we put out, and we wanna make sure that if we do put out this information, that it's gonna be useful for our investigation. So we kinda waited a little bit on that. We did some diligence. We're, we had two separate incidents. I don't know that our detectives are convinced that both of those incidents are something that happened the way that it was reported, and it may have been misunderstood by the reporting parties. We're not really sure yet. We're still investigating them. We're still following up on some leads. I will say that the press release that we put out there did yield some, some community input from that, so we are following up on those leads, which is nice. That's part of the purpose of those press releases, to get some help. And then we'll go from there. But right now, we haven't been able to verify whether or not those were true child enticements or some sort of misunderstanding from those, those reporting parties. So, we're working on those. We'll find out more. Any questions on that?
Anything else?
That's all the bad news I have for today.
Okay. We'll go to item eleven B, discussion possible action regarding Oregon Community Resource Network and Oregon Area Food Pantry's request for additional funding to cover permit fees and impact fees in a ten thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars for a new food pantry building. There's a note that we did approve, providing ten thousand dollars and not charging any consulting time for the food pantry at the meeting on January ninth, two thousand seventeen, and January twenty-third, two thousand seventeen board meeting. So, now they're looking at requests about the permit fees and impact fees, ten thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars, so... Comments?
I'd like to make a comment without making a motion.
Yeah, I think we should start with some.
Yeah, I...
See where we are.
As you indicated, we've given them ten thousand dollars already, and I certainly support the efforts of the food pantry, but we've heard nothing but information tonight about our costs and how our costs are are mounting up, and the staff is having a problem deciding in our capital improvement plan how to stage all of this. So, I guess what I'd like to do with this is, rather than deny it, I'd like to wait till the end of the year to see how the financials are at the end of the year, and then make a determination then if we wanna write those costs off, not charge those costs.
So Lisa, if we were to do this, where would the money come from? Is this contingency?
Well, there wouldn't be enough in contingency to cover the entire cost. There's only ten thousand dollars left in contingency right now. It would, the only other areas would be cost savings in some of the other areas within the operation budget.
So if we did this through contingency, there'd be no contingency left at all?
Correct.
Okay. So I kinda lean with Jerry, wait till the end of the year and see where we are, if that works. And if you look at this, ten thousand dollars, that's half what we're giving the police department, the public works, and other departments, so...
Right, and, you know, we're not filling our position because we're, because of the budget constraints that we have right now, and some of the overages in some of the other areas that we're trying to cover. Is this a case where, have they already paid this and asking to be reimbursed, or they're just waiting to see what we say? Do we know, like have? He, yeah, they came in to pay it. Okay. But we didn't know what to tell them for sure, so that's why we brought it to the board, so it has not been paid yet. Okay. So Jerry, you're thinking that they should pay it, and then we'll look at the budget at the end of the year, and if we can, we'll reimburse it?
We, just, you know, from accounting standpoint, we'd...
We, for, just, you need to know, from accounting standpoint, we'd ask them to do that anyways.
Okay.
Just so you know. We'd ask them to pay it, and then reimburse them.
Gotcha, okay. I didn't know how that worked.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I would be in favor of that, because, I mean, obviously, we want to help the food pantry if we can.
Right.
But budgets are tight, and I do feel good that we have given them $10,000, and we haven't, and what else? We're not charging them for any...
Consulting, like, going to, going to the planning commission, for example.
So, I feel like we're trying to be a good neighbor.
We are, and, you know, I hate to forgive this, and then get hit with a large snow season this fall. And, you know, really put Jeff's budget in jeopardy.
Yeah.
So, I'd rather wait, and if things work out well, we can, at Christmas time, there'll be a Santa Claus for the food pantry.
Okay, looks like we're all pretty much in agreement with that, yeah. So, if we want to have that for December?
Yep.
To look at, and we...
And we'll do that.
...the year ago.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, item C, Status Of Filling Deputy Clerk Position And Possible Action Recommended Motion Delay Recruitment Of Deputy Clerk Position At This Time Due To 2017 General Fund Budget Concerns.
Uh, some move for discussion?
Thank you.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. And that's one Lisa just mentioned, basically saving money, but not...
It's, and Lisa agrees with me on this, but it's the legal budget that's really out of, out of whack. And it isn't just Matt. For some reason, we're going to trial a lot and in court, and that's out of our control. So, we're getting, we're getting bills for that. But else, I also know we're going to be spending legal time to do the MOU with the library, and we've just been very busy. And we just got a little, little nervous every time we look at the legal fees, that we're going to go over budget. Well, we are over budget.
Yeah.
And so, we thought, well, we kind of keep this position open to try to balance the general fund by the end of the year. Staff's okay with it, and then we'll hopefully, you know, start to recruit for next year.
Okay.
Kind of makes the case for pulling off on the food pantry.
Well, I was trying to be careful about how I did the agenda. I wasn't trying to set that up for failure, but I, it...
I was going to comment earlier that, I was going to compliment Peggy that we have, we seem to be caught, by we, I mean you, seem to be caught up on the minutes. Well, okay, so let me, when I first came on the board four years ago, we were approving minutes that were like six months old. And I couldn't, I was like, why are we doing this? And the answer was, we don't have the staff. And I know that you're probably still behind, but it's exciting that we are approving minutes from July.
I think you're right.
I'll tell you that Mike went on vacation for a week, and I was like...
So, now we know...
That's what it takes. Okay, I'll be gone again. Get the minutes done.
So, I'll try. So, my question is, Peggy, are things like this going to start sliding again, when, if we don't have that position filled? Tell me, I would like, I would like to know what's going to slide, what's not going to get done.
There will be stuff that does not get done.
Yeah.
But what it is?
You don't know, really?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it's a burden on Lisa and Peggy and also on Candy. And so, Candy was going to, for example, help, help me work on the employee handbook, Jeannie. And we're going to try working on that, but that's going to get probably pushed down a little bit, for example, and there's just some things there. Yeah, the minutes, the minutes are, the minutes are, we struggle getting minutes done. We have, because we have so many meetings. And deputy clerk, you know, really was supposed to handle a lot of the meetings, so. Now, I think Peggy forget the minutes done.
Was there a target date for filling that position?
Well, at this point, I think we're thinking we're going to keep it open until all 17, just to balance the budget. And then, we'll go into 18, and then we'll see how the budget is. And honestly, Lisa and I initially said that, that may be the, the thing that we maybe move around a little bit for 18, you know, versus starting on January 1st, maybe we'll make it February 1st, if we need that little bit of money to balance the budget next year. But, and if we don't, then we'll start recruiting for it to have somebody here in January.
So, you'll start recruiting when?
I, I can probably tell you better, in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah, I should have probably just said that, sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jeannie, because I was going to make that comment too and did not on the minutes. You were being generous at six months. It used to be longer than that, years ago.
Well, and I don't know...
There just wasn't time, and, yeah.
I should, I should say, one of the key things, though, Peggy agrees with me, we don't, we're not having a lot of elections. And so, while you, when you, we got really behind by not having the position filled, sorry. We're not fully staffed back then. We had four, four elections, for example. Then you really...
Yeah.
Elections become the top priority.
Yeah, as they need to. Anything else in this item? We have the motion second to delay recruiting for the deputy clerk position due to 2017 general fund budget concerns. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you for that.
Item D, Discussion Of Toro Mower Repair. It's an FYI. Jeff?
Yeah, just, we kind of had to move ahead a little bit on this, just because it's right in the middle of catching up with some mowing. And our, our large commercial mower, it's the Toro Groundmaster 5900, went down, and they found metal in the hydraulic unit. And they're going to have to go in and start looking to figure out what it is. They've given us an estimate of about $12,900. It's a very expensive mower, so, and, and obviously, with our, our plan, CIP, we're not planning on replacing it. And I'm, I'm fine with that. I think we can continue to maintain it and keep it in a good working order. Jerry, you asked earlier, you know, did we have a savings from the flatbed trucks? We saved about $6,500 over what was budgeted. That times two is right at about $13,000, and we've talked to Lisa about using that as part of our equipment fund.
Good, that's good news.
Yeah.
So, that'll, that'll be a future budget, right, for that minute. So, we'll have to move the money out of the equipment fund into the operation.
Yeah. Yeah. And we hope it won't cost that much, but, you know, when you take something to a mechanic, you know how that works.
Why don't you stop mowing in November then, for a while?
Thank you, Jerry. I did not do, and I told you so, to anything on this. Because it's not, it's just, I mean, things happen, so. But, you know, an expense like that, we'd love to be able to bring before the board, but if it has happened like two weeks ago, and if we wait till that period and then to get it in, it's, it's almost a loss of a whole month.
Yeah. Any questions for Jeff? We'll go to item E, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Rookert And Milky Task Order Number Four For Construction Review Services During Construction Of The Jefferson Street Roadway Project. Now, the recommended motion is to approve task order number four with Rookert And Milky in the amount of $3,744 Plus Reimbursables For Construction Inspection Of Jefferson Street. Now, the funding is from 2017 borrowing. Need a motion, please?
Some move. Second.
Thank you.
This is just something that came up that was kind of, it fell through cracks a little bit, but with Dane County out there, we have Town And Country who's, who was on the utility installation, but now they're only on the North Bar Oak portion. And honestly, we, it's smart for us to at least have this investment of just having a, an EIT or a young engineer in training out there, watching to make sure things are going smoothly, and if they had a soft spot, can identify that, you know, before it gets backfilled and everything, so.
Okay. Any questions? So, we have that motion for task order number four with Rookert And Milky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Influenced Pumping Station Pump Replacement. Recommended Motion Is To Approve The Xylem Quote Date At July 11, 2017, Totaling $12,635 For New Replacement Pump And Installation. Need a motion, please?
Some move. Second.
Thank you.
This is the third of this that we've seen come through, a third in three years. And our, our plan will be to continue to replace the next two in the next two years. The good news is, they kind of get a little cheaper every time we buy another one. I don't know if it's just hitting the pricing right, but if we carry this out, you know, 30, 40 years, they're, they'll be free. But, no, we do have a, we do have a strong, and we've always maintained and are required to maintain a strong equipment replacement fund with the wastewater treatment plant. And that is a pot of money that we, we put money aside every year in that for this type of expense, so.
Any questions? We have motion second to approve the Xylem Quote Totaling $12,635 For New Replacement Pump And Installation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, G, Letter From Pelletary Regarding Mattresses, Box Springs And Bed Bugs. They are finding bed bugs. And for the safety of their employees, they're now requiring that mattresses and bed springs be bagged.
Unless it's in dumpster.
Yeah, unless in a dumpster. And bags can be purchased, and I replace it shows online, and they're surprisingly inexpensive.
Is this information on the website?
It, I thought it was.
I, if not, Jerry, we'll make sure it is.
Sure, because a lot of people refer to that.
Yeah. I'll destroy tomorrow.
Yep.
Item H Is An FYI Public Works To Bid A Large Spring 2018 Project For Millen Overlay And Chip Ceiling Village Streets. Now, this would combine funding from 2016, 17, and 18. Any questions here? We'll hear more about that this spring.
Yes.
Item I, Disposal Of Surplus Property Flatbed Trucks. Recommended Motion Authorize Public Works To Dispose Of Truck Number 11 And Truck Number 12 With Any Proceeds Received To Be Placed Back Into Fund For 14th Equipment. Need a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Item J, Letter To Lily Beal Regarding Pedestrian Safety. She wrote, I believe she said she's 10 years old, yeah. She wrote to the public works director That I've noticed that none in bold printing of the driver stopped the crosswalk at Main Street by ODI. And almost every day, we go to the pool, and we bike there and use the crosswalk, but a lot of people do not stop for us. Please share this with others in the village hall, so this problem can be fixed sincerely. Lily Beal, age 10. And that was response from Jeff.
I love this letter.
I love letters like this.
Could we put it out and put it on, you know, we have that little cubicle thing right by the crosswalk downtown where you can post stuff? Can we put it there? It's already been public.
It could, I've never...
I think it's adorable, and if I saw this, I'd be like, oh, it should probably stop for the little kids.
In the Hitching Park area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be neat, that's neat.
Maybe ask for posting firefly.
Also that? I love to see 10-year-olds get involved in local government.
Yeah, I know.
Who posts there? We, we have a, we have a, we have a key for it.
Oh.
Judy?
I can post stuff there.
You can totally post stuff there.
We can post it outside. No, not, you have to ask us. You can post outside.
For sale.
Yeah. You sure can.
There's been a lot of discussion about safety and crosswalks and cars not stopping and that type of thing. It's, it's kind of tough for us as a police department to enforce this, because the law says they have to actually be out in the roadway, in the crosswalk. So, if they're just standing there on the curb waiting to cross, and cars don't stop unless there's a sign there or flashing beacon, we can't enforce it. We can't make them stop. I mean, for example, there was someone on Perry Parkway and Janesville Street. There was a kid on, on his bike waiting, and I happened to come up to the intersection, and nobody would stop. Nobody would stop. I actually had to get out of my squad car and stop traffic in order to let this kid go across the street. So, it's tough. I mean, that, that intersection itself is tough as well. So, it's tougher my enforcement standpoint to get out there and, and spread the message that you need to be looking out for people on the crosswalks. You know, be courteous and allow them to cross. Because in certain, in certain streets, they, they'll, they'll, it'll be a long time before they get across, so.
Yeah, and I should comment too, I've, over the years, well, before you hear, I've commented about how it happens in Maine, and it works so well. I'm not criticizing our police at all for that, because I know it's a difficult situation. And you could go out there and really push that for two or three days, and the next day, it'd be right back to what it is right now. So, I don't know what the answer is, but...
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can go out there. We've, we've done, you know, stings, I guess, for lack of a better word, and then impose to people out there and have people cross to see if cars are stopping. We would cite them, and, you know, maybe that's something we have to try to continue to do, if staffing permits, just to get the message out there. I mean, it's a hundred and some dollar fine, you know, that kind of gets the message out there a little bit, and maybe we should stop. However, that message doesn't last very long.
Yeah.
So, it, it's tough.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. Again, I'm not criticizing the police at all. And you have lots of other things to do besides deal with crosswalks, so.
Well, that's, it's true, but you, you would want to see, like you say, happens in Maine. You would like to see people stopping. And there are occasions when I do see cars will stop and let people come through, but at the, on the busy roads, it just seems like nobody sees those people. They just keep driving.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Where, where the kids put that flag out, though, then it, people are supposed to stop, aren't they?
They don't legally have to unless they're in the crosswalk. Doesn't matter if they have a flag or not.
Yeah, I thought the flag was just for visibility purposes.
It's just visibility, yeah.
By the way, thank you for sharing that story of helping that kid across. It's just another example of how proactive the Oregon Police Department is. And I rave about that, you know, like, a police officer saw our car windows smashed out, woke us up at 3:30 in the morning so we could deal with it, instead of just letting it sit there. And I just, I really appreciate that, for me, so.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, so again, thanks to Lily for that letter. We appreciate it. Item K, Letter To The American Planning Association, Wisconsin Chapter, Nominating The Village New Sign Code For An Award. That's a letter that Mike assigned to do that nomination. And thanks to our planning staff for the work he did. Item L, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Scope Of Services For Wastewater Treatment Facility Study. Recommended Motion Approve Task Order Number One With Town And Country In About $42,000 To $46,000 For Wastewater Treatment Plant Facility Study. There's a note from the 2017 budget. The facilities plan is scheduled to be completed over two years. Estimated 2017 budget amount is $25,000, a total of 40. Estimated for completed plan remaining $15,000 in 2018 budget. Need a motion, please?
Some move. Second.
Thank you.
So, we'll be adjusting the 2018 budget amount to be able to cover the, the balance of the, the facility plan. And I'll, Ben's, Ben's here. I don't know if you want to, you've been here, you might as, you've been here, you're, to earn, earn your fee tonight, you can just come. Ben, Ben is an engineer with the Town And Country, and they've been our wastewater engineers, helped us out on a lot of different things. And, you know, what, what became apparent very early on is just, you know, we have a facility, but we really haven't done a really good assessment in a long time of the age and condition of the facility. I noticed the one time we had, we have a generator that can power a portion of our facility, but not the entire facility. So, this is an opportunity to be able to look at the entire system, treatment system, age, condition.
Yeah, and I can kind of...
Go ahead.
Just generally, yep.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate that.
Yep.
You are not restricted to three minutes.
Okay. That's good, because I usually can't talk in only three minutes. All right, so you guys, and they, you, everybody has the proposal in your, in your packets, correct? Okay, so, like Jeff was saying, what you have in front of you is a proposal to do facilities planning. Generally, what facilities planning is considered for treatment plant and, and water systems is a 20-year look at your system. And it provides the village an opportunity to really plan out and decide how, on that infrastructure side of things, how you want to grow or, or not grow, or whatever you want to do with it. So, what, and we've kind of laid out in here exactly what's entailed with that, but in, in general, it's broken up into really three categories. The first one is a taking a look at your existing system, existing flows, what you have coming to your treatment plants in terms of wastewater, and then working with the village, and specifically you guys here, to decide how, how you want to plan for the next 20 years. How big do you want to anticipate your treatment plant being? And then, based upon those numbers, we would then sit down again and look at, for the next 20 years, what is the most efficient means for you to be treating wastewater? And that could be a range of possibilities from reusing your existing site or continuing, not reusing, but continuing to use your existing site and your existing infrastructure, if it meets the needs of your community in the long run, to doing some sort of a substantial upgrade to your existing site, or looking at alternative sites, or even pumping to MMSD because of the area that you're in. So, that is kind of the second phase of the evaluation, is doing a, a cost evaluation, a lifecycle-type cost evaluation of those different alternatives. And then, the final portion of the, of the evaluation is taking a look at your rates and how financing associated with any projects that you do can be accomplished. So, so taking a little closer look at both your user rate system as it currently sits, as well as potential user rate impacts associated with any modifications or improvements that you make. So, that's the, the all-encompassing facilities planning. It's really the first step in doing any sort of work at your treatment plant, or really just giving yourself an assessment of where everything's at. Jeff gave the example of the generator. It's really giving you an opportunity of having a plan. So, if, even if you decide, well, a project, we're not just going to do something right now, big, but it gives you kind of a pathway of deciding what you're going to do and how you're going to improve things down there. For examples, like the generator, or, or anything else that really comes up. examples, like the generator, or, or anything else that really comes up, you know, five years from now, you can pull that plan out and say, well, this is what we had intended to do. We had, as a community, decided we were gonna do this. So, it kinda lays everything out for you in that regard.
Good, good. We like planning. Are there questions for Ben?
Pretty straightforward.
Jeff, do you wanna?
No, no, and I, this is, this is gonna give me a very valuable tool. I think one of the things, you know, that I've tried to accomplish in the last year is really getting a much better handle on, on, I'll call it the Public Works Capital Improvement Plan. One of the areas that I've always felt kinda behind the ball on is the wastewater treatment plant, capital improvement plan. And those are the ones, and the thing that scares me about that is sometimes those could be big-ticket items, and we've talked about MCC, control cabinets, lowers, things that are very process-driven and very important part of the process that are getting very old. And, and they continue to work well, but...
Yeah, it really comes down to the point that, you know, if you did have to replace some of those, you wanna make sure that you're replacing them in a fashion that meets your needs twenty years from now.
Right.
You know, 'cause the blowers, for example, are thirty-five years old going on that, so...
Yep. And I think, I think it's always very important that we look at the big-picture items. Ben and I've talked about, I know, you know, some people, I don't think Mark was a huge fan of, of the pumping option, but, you know, it's been proven, community after community, when they pumped MMSD, their, their rates actually have gone down. And so, those are options we, you know, that you have to look at whenever you're looking at potentially large upgrades to the plant.
Any questions? Thanks, Ben. We appreciate your input, and we'll look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you. So, we have that as a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item M, village is seeking proposals from engineering firms to prepare design plans and specifications for Kelston Park. Proposals are due August twenty-fifth, and funding is from the two thousand seventeen borrowing for improvements. Item twelve, reported committees, none. Minutes not requiring action. Library board meeting for July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Oregon Cable TV committee meeting July eighteen, two thousand seventeen, in Oregon Area Fire MS District, July eleventh, two thousand seventeen. Item fourteen, unfinished business. There is none. Item fifteen, new business. Item A, approval of pending new operator license is approved by the police department. Charlie's on Main, Shane Andry, Quick Trip three oh two, Tricia Telfer, Quick Trip three seventy-two, Rebecca Veronic, and Stop and Go, Nicole Prebe.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, renewal operator license approved by police department. There are none. Sixteen, there are future agenda items coming our way, and then we go to item seventeen, which would be a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.